All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the special called meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education and the City Council. I will call the meeting to order and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, just a couple of housekeeping items. We are recording this for the YouTube channel and there'll be a link for the city's website. So when you are speaking, I know we're sharing microphones, but if you could speak into the microphones. Also, there are refreshments back over there, so if you would like to help yourself to that. I will start with just a welcome and then Mayor Marquez Simula will offer a welcome as well and then we'll do some introductions. So just to start off, welcome to all of you. My name is Lorian Miller. I am the Chair of the Columbia Heights Board of Education. Really welcome to our city partners here. It's really exciting to have this opportunity to share this meeting with all of you and I'm looking forward to the conversations and discussions we'll have today.
Thank you, Lorian. And I'll just say, thank you on behalf of the council for welcoming us to have a shared meeting with you and to the community room here. It's a great space and I'm so glad we get to have this moment to come together and introduce new members to the team. And we did have a meeting two years ago, I think, and to sort of renew this more often partnership we'll get together on. So, thank you very much.
Great. So what we would like to do is to give an opportunity for everybody to introduce themselves. In addition to your name and your role or position, if you could also share your why? Why, as an elected official, you decided to run for office? Or in your positions, why that was something that you decided you wanted to do? I will start. As I mentioned, my name is Lorian. I am the Chair of the School Board. And I ran, I had been involved in volunteering at our PTOs for 11 years prior to running. And I've always said, I, my mom was a public school teacher and it was really important for me. I saw her and what the passion that she had and what she gave to the students and what our community school did for our community. My family moved to Columbia Heights specifically to send our kids to school in Columbia Heights. And I wanted an opportunity to have a community school and to support the staff. I've long said I would be a terrible teacher, but it's so important for what they do for our kids. And so I know I wouldn't be great in the classroom, so my hope and goal is to support our students and our teachers and staff outside of the classroom. So that's my why. Mayor?
Sure. Again, so my name is Mayor, oh, my name is Amada Marcus Simula and I'm the Mayor of Columbia Heights. And my why is to help be a voice for the community. And, you know, I find myself very much making connections and out in the community volunteering and getting to know people. And I'm happy to be that conduit, that person to sort of take that message back, to share with the council and staff to, you know, move the community's vision and questions forward. So that is my why.
Oh, I guess I get to go next. I'm Laura Palmer. I'm presently the Vice Chair. I also serve on another board to the Special Education District of 916, Northeast Metro This is a real passion of mine and I have, I had a stepson who, who had a lot of difficulties in school and there was a lot of investment in, in his education and, and hopefully his success. And I, I couldn't understand why with all of the, and it wasn't actually in the school district, you know, so just a disclosure here, is, I couldn't understand why, why there were, why there were hurdles that couldn't be met because he was really bright, but it was hard to, to do that. So I became more interested in, and, you know, how the whole system works and a lot of the restrictions. And it was a big and complicated thing and I kept asking questions and the more questions I asked, the more I, I thought I needed to be on the board to actually find out all of the answers because, you know, you can't find it out in just one school board meeting. You know, there's a ton of resource, you know, research, and sometimes you just don't know what to ask, you know? You know, you know you have questions and you don't, you don't know the questions to ask to find out the answers that you're seeking. So, but it's a great experience. I, I'm constantly challenged every day, so, and I really appreciate everybody that works so hard for the benefit of our kids.
I'm Julie Hul. I'm a board member and treasurer of the School Board. And my why is mainly, you know, I became an empty nester last year and I was looking for an opportunity to help children because that is a passion of mine as well. And so this was an opportunity to, to maybe use some of my professional skills as well as, you know, meet that passion that I had. That's why I ran.
Just scoot on over here. My name is Justice Spriggs. I'm a council member. Just started my term a couple of months ago. And my why, I guess, I'm the School Board and Library Board Liaison. Like the connection between those two as we foster better partnership with those. And my why, as many of you know, I'm in medical school soon to graduate here and I, I really got interested in how public policy can better people's health and wellbeing. And I really got involved in looking into the different policies that were being passed or weren't being passed. And I saw a lot of good things happening in Columbia Heights and I wanted to be part of that change because we were moving in a good direction and I'm excited to contribute to that as well.
My name is Michelle Petway. I am the liaison to the city of Columbia Heights as well as North Park School. And I, I think that my why kind of found me as I was journeying into my daughter's education as she started kindergarten. We started in Columbia Heights and we never wanted to leave. And there were no huge bumps in the road aside from COVID, which everyone hit that bump. And even along that journey, my daughter was very well adjusted and we, we kind of got through it kind of smoothly. But as she kept going and furthering into her journey, I began to get more involved. And as I got more involved, I started to learn more and I enjoyed it more. And I started to get a little more involved and I enjoyed it even more. And I kind of just found my way here. It led me to apply for the empty position on, on the board and I was appointed a seat here. So I am the only appointed board member on the board, but I, I actually enjoy this, this learning process because it's still teaching me more. And as I further my journey now into this process, I'm able to now advocate for more children who may be struggling a little bit more and maybe I can help them on their journey. And I'm actually enjoying learning a lot from everyone here actually who have all different experiences and been through different journeys of their own. So that's kind of my why is I love to learn and I want to give that to everyone else.
I am another new member of the School Board here in Columbia Heights. And, you know, public education has just been really central to my own life, my childhood growing up, the life of my family now as an adult, as a parent, and in my professional life working in higher education. And, you know, I came up like Lorian and mothers on the board through, through volunteer schools and doing incredible work that our teachers and staff are doing every day to support our kids. And I really wanted to move from sort of volunteering as a parent in the schools into governance. So I'm sure that all of our students are supported in our schools and to strengthen that governance and our students, governance and our families, governance and our teachers and staff, our relationships, our overheads and.
Hi, everybody. I'm Connie Biscens. Been on the council now for six years. Originally, I ran to clean up Central Avenue and many debates with my neighbor next door for years about Central Avenue. No. No. He's senior now. He's, he's retired, so we had lots of debates. But we have made some progress. We got the new building on 40th and Central. We got a facade program. We're doing the redevelopment at the Rainbow Site. And we pushed really hard. There's residents in the city to, for Mindot to bring our Main Street back, so that's in progress. And, and, but it's expanded beyond that. It's not just Central Avenue. It's strengthening our public safety, police department and, and fire department, providing them supports, community development, helping them and supporting them in their endeavors and the things that they're trying to do to improve our city. The library, IT, we didn't have an IT director until, what, last year, I think it was? We never had an IT director. Our poor Joe Finance Director was the IT Director. So things like that, helping the Finance Department, supporting them and getting new systems so we could move into the 21st century with our payments processes and how they do their accounting. Admin, I mean, it's, geez, Park and Rec, supporting them. That's a big thing that's coming up this year with our immersion hall that's been well loved to death in parks. And it's just helping to improve their quality of life in so many different ways and I love, love doing it. We've got a beautiful, we've got wonderful people in this city and it's such an eclectic mix that I really love what I'm doing and, and trying to make our city bigger and better, not bigger, but better, because we can't much get bigger except that way, but we'll see about that. So anyway, started out with Central and lots of other things have been added on, so thank you. Nice to meet everybody, the new members. It's great. This is always fun to visit with the School Boards, so it's really cool. Thanks.
Well, hello. I'm Mary Granlin. I am the School Board Clerk. My why, Lorian, you should have warned us. So like many others, I have spent years volunteering within our district. Our Director of Curriculum and Learning has a wonderful story about the first time that we met. And, you know, I have truly loved being able to see our staff and students and how they shine even though we, we don't always have the same funding as the, our neighboring districts and our kids are still doing really, really well. And so with my, my educational experience as an early childhood therapist, I really wanted to switch from advocacy in the classroom to governance in the boardroom just because, you know, highlighting some of those other pieces that, especially since the pandemic, is really important to make sure that we are holding those things forefront too when we're looking at children's mental health and our staff's mental health too as we're making the governance decisions and really doing as best as we can to make sure that all voices are heard at the table. So I'm grateful for everybody to be here tonight and I'm so excited for this meeting, so thank you.
My name is Rachel James. I am a new City Council Member, but I'm not new to Columbia Heights. Been here for 12 years. The why, it brings me back to why I started. When we first moved, we, very first year, signed up as a block captain with the Police Department and hosted the National Night Out Party and started realizing, wow, this is a special place with special services. And then my oldest got to be about three, four years old and we signed up for the, the cutest little soccer club that you ever saw with the Parks and Rec and they all ran the opposite way and no balls were kicked anywhere, but we had a wonderful time meeting the other families and just really became in love with Columbia Heights and how it was a great place to live and to work. I work at First Lutheran as the Director of Children, Youth and Family Ministries and I spent my entire career working to develop resources and build connections for people. And this is an opportunity to do that. I'm very passionate about public safety and equity. I'm passionate about sustainability and also our connected community because Columbia Heights is very special and unique, especially in the way we have a school district that's not the same as Columbia Heights, but it's also a community school district and our city and we connect with our county and other resources. We just have an opportunity for all the amenities of a big city right here in a small town. And so that's, that's my why and thank you for hosting us and having us here.
Good evening. I'm Zena Stenvik, Superintendent for Columbia Heights Public Schools. My why always starts with the children first and foremost. And I concur, Council Member James, that Columbia Heights is a special place. And here in Columbia Heights Public Schools, we have the best students. We have the best kids. We also have the best staff to support them. And so my why is anything I can do to lend my support for fostering their creativity, their curiosity, and fostering our beautiful multicultural and diverse community within our school and reaching out to our community. That's, that's what I'm here to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Bourgeois. I'm the City Manager for Columbia Heights. My why started about 28 years ago. I've been in local government that long now. And really I wanted to make a positive impact on the built environment first. I have a planning background. And that really evolved then into city management and HR. So transitioning to that positive impact in the built environment to the, the positive impact to our social environment, to our residents, and then also to our staff. And Superintendent Stenvik might have the best school staff. We have the best city staff. So we do have such a unique community here that it's just unmatched. And to be able to provide those services at all of the levels that we do and to have such great partnerships. I've been in other cities where the partnership with the schools are not what we have and the partnerships with other entities are not what we have here. So we're very, very lucky. And just to have everyone sitting around this table, talking and, and really happy to be here is actually very unique and I'm proud and really just thrilled to be a part of it and looking forward to the rest of the discussion tonight.
Thank you all. We're excited to have some updates. First, we have our city updates. So if our speakers are those who are presenting from the city would like to come on?
Thank you. I'll introduce. So we've got Erin Chirpik, who's our Community Development Director. We're going to talk some, about our physical development that's occurring in the city. And then Keith Winchell will talk about some programming development. And Renee Doherty, our Library Director is luckily in Hawaii right now. So I have some updates from her that we'll go over. And then just to, to recognize, our Police Chief, Lenny Austin, is here. We aren't giving a police update. I know we just talked contracts on the School Resource Officer recently, so he's here if there's questions, but the formal presentations, we'll start with Erin and then go to Keith and I'll wrap up on the library side.
All right. Well, good evening, board members, City Council. Erin Chirpik, Community Development Director for the city. Just going to share some of the highlights, kind of high level development updates for economic development, development projects that are in the pipeline. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. So I'd kick it off with the, kind of the winding down of the 40th and Central Mixed Use Redevelopment Project that includes 266 apartments, a new city hall and cafe space. The apartments started leasing in October of last year and they're about 41% leased up right now. So that end of the project's going really well and they're really happy with that. As we pivot into some other projects that include multifamily redevelopment, that's a good sign. City Hall is scheduled to open in June, so we're a little bit behind our desired original schedule, but pandemic-related supply chain issues and other things kind of slowed us down a little bit, but fully anticipate moving city administrative operations into that new space by the end of June. So that's very exciting, obviously. There's also under construction right now behind the city's Public Safety Building, the Police and Fire Station, a 62-unit affordable housing development that will be opening in July. That site had originally anticipated to co-locate with a new SECA food shelf facility. Since the initial planning, SECA has moved on to actually looking at an existing building in an industrial space in the city. So the city will begin, you know, deciding what becomes of that parcel, but excited for SECA and their new space and the affordable housing is a great project as well. So the Railworks Brewing Depot, many of you probably heard that that's been a project that's been in the pipeline for several years. The pandemic kind of put their plans on hold. They had received city approvals right about when the pandemic really kicked off and they're going into the strip mall right across from the new City Hall apartment project. And they met with the council and the EDA last night and the, the city actually gave some grant funding of about $30,000 to that project to support fire suppression upgrades and some facade improvements. And if all goes well, they want to be opening at some time in September. So very exciting, happy to see that come to fruition. It also includes a barbecue restaurant and brewery combo. So the Rainbow Site, people might call it the Hy-Vee Site, Rainbow Site, Slumberland Site. Pick your poison, I guess, but the big hole there on Central. We're partnering with the same developer that did the ratio project at 40th and Central, the, the City Hall and Apartment Project. And they acquired the site a couple of years ago. We're waiting for the Dollar Tree lease to wind down. That does conclude in June where the developer plans to bring the building down, hopefully sometime in July. The project includes, right now, a mix of high-density residential, so several hundred apartment units, medium-density residential, townhomes and civic space, and then a varying degree of commercial and retail space in a vertical mixed-use orientation. So bringing the buildings up to Central Avenue where it's previously set back several hundred feet. That site is about 13 acres and when you include the city's large stormwater pond that's on that site. The intention is to move that pond and turn it into more of a desirable feature than a chained-in kind of non, not an aesthetically pleasing asset at the moment. So huge project. From a city planning and community development perspective, it's, it's not too often that you get a master plan in a fully developed urban community of that size. It's kind of like playing SimCity. So very exciting on many levels and we really hope that Phase One is in the ground next spring or at the earliest would be the fourth quarter of this year. So look for updates on that project. We'll be rolling out engagement efforts once the developers are ready to introduce those plans. And right now, I don't want to get anybody too excited, but they're close to hopefully securing a grocery tenant. It's been an on-again, off-again relationship, but can't disclose who that is at the moment, but it'd be really great if we were able to pull that off, so. The Fairview Building remains vacant at the moment at the corner of 40th and Central. There are some qualified redevelopers looking at adaptive reuse concepts for that site, so we're not entirely sure. Conversations to maybe bring a clinic back into that space. No matter what, it's exciting to have the people that are looking at it, looking at it. Right now, Fairview's in negotiations with Sanford Health for a potential merger. It looks like it may not happen. So that process really needs to wind down before anything significant can happen there, but with the energy that we have at that corner, it would be great to continue and to fill that space. So the positive outlook there as well. I don't know if anyone has heard, but the Medtronic site is up for sale. So Medtronic has recalibrated their business option, excuse me, operations, like many office uses throughout the pandemic, and they're going to consolidate across the highway at the Fridley Campus. They have a main corporate campus and kind of put all of their energy into that space. They have expansion room there. So they'll be winding down operations in Columbia Heights. It's sad to see Medtronic go, but it does open a tremendous opportunity for another 12-acre site in the city that is currently underutilized. And as, as that changes hands, there are again a number of qualified redevelopers looking at that site that we're aware of. We've worked with the brokers representing the site and several developers that have taken interest in it. We will work to kind of create a vision from scratch because for many years in the, in the latest iteration of the Conference of Plan, it's designated as Medtronic. You know, it was always going to be there. So we'll pivot, we'll make, you know, lemonade out of lemons there and that is a really cool site in a really great location. So, and another blank, blank slate that is really exciting. Asia Chow Mein, so a little, something a little smaller down the road, had recent, has recently sold. It sold to the same owners that own Maya Cuisine on Central Avenue in Northeast and they are going to open a Mexican restaurant in that location, similar in concept to Maya Cuisine, but something different. So we're not entirely sure, but that should open soon. And then finally, the city has assembled about three acres of land at the intersection of University and 40th Avenue across from Sarnos and recently completed a considerable environmental remediation of that property. It's a former industrial site that had six or 700 tons of contaminated soils, outbuildings and various environmental concerns that that cleanup concluded this summer. We still have a little bit of assembly work, but it's, it's a really great site, another gateway to the community that's guided for mixed-use development in the Conference of Plan, but I think it'll be a great space for potentially some high-density housing and commercial activity. So those are the highlights. It's a bright future from where community development certainly sits and more than enough things to, to keep the department busy at the moment, so. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you for that information. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have Keith Winchell. Keith is our Recreation Director and in charge of all of our programming and I know he's got a list of different programs to chat about tonight.
Thank you, Board and City Council. I'm Keith Winchell, Recreation Director for the city. The Recreation Department has had a fantastic relationship with Community Ed and the district for many years. The Recreation Department and Community Ed have collaborated on many projects over the years. Over the 26 years that I've been here, we've been in a joint grant arrangement for almost all of those years and it's benefited the community and a lot of the youth in the community. Currently, we're in the sixth year of the 21st Century Grant. This has provided after-school and school-out day trip programs for the youth in the community. Also funds a good portion of our summer rec program as well. We've worked closely with the FIED and the athletic programs at the district to utilize the Highlander Center gym space for both, both entities. When we're not using it, one, for one, the other one uses it. So it's worked out well for, for both of us. Rec staff has also served on the Community Ed Advisory Council and also the Advisory Council for the 21st Century Grant. The summer staff has brought our summer park programs up to Blooming Heights during the summer. This has been a great asset to the summer rec program. The rec program works closely with the district athletic program to coordinate the field space for the athletics. As many of you know, we utilize some of the same ball fields and the city actually gets, prepares a lot of the ball fields for the district athletic programs. We've worked with Community Ed to supply the equipment for the fantastic pickleball program that's currently going on and we've partnered with. Immersion Hall also provides space for the district sports banquets and programs and also some of the district events when we have school, new teacher appreciation and things like that. Our Senior Citizen Program has also coordinated events together with the Community Ed Senior Program. Just a week ago, they actually had a trip to the state Capitol, which the program was done with both entities involved and went staffed by both, both entities. It was full and very successful. We look forward to doing more of those kind of programs in the future. Currently, they're working on a car fit program that we're working with AARP to get seniors adjusted into their vehicles so that they can drive more safely. That's coming up on May 20th. The Recreation Department looks forward to continue the great relationship that the rec department has with the, with the district. We hope that together we can plan and program great activities that meet the needs of the community. That's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Keith. I'm just going to add a couple of pieces to that, not so much Recreation Department-related, but, but city event-related. Our newsletter is a combination city newsletter and recreation program and we really, really
not so much Recreation Department-related, but city event-related. Our newsletter is a combination city newsletter and recreation program, and we really, really do appreciate that the school allows us to put those out and send those home with the kids. It's a great way for us to get our programming and our community information out to all of our residents, so thank you for that. We also have our Circle Terrace Building. So we built a building in the Circle Terrace neighborhood a number of years ago, and the intent of that was to really be a community building that we did programming out of, but that we also had the county doing programming out of and the school doing programming out of, to really provide services, especially to that neighborhood, but also to the community as a whole. COVID kind of put a halt to a lot of that, but we're back now, and we're really looking at using that building again. And it was great to partner with Bondo and his staff this last summer on getting a reading program through the school into that building. I think the key of that success for that is going to just be repetition and getting people to realize that we will always be there. We will, if the program is Thursday mornings, we'll always be there Thursday mornings, or whatever that might be. So we really also appreciate being able to partner with the schools on that. We're looking forward to bringing in a host of other partners at that more, that larger level, the county and others for those pieces. And then our different events, you know, last year was our 100-year anniversary. So we started a lot of events that were supposed to be just anniversary events, Snow Blast and Music in the Park and Movies in the Park. They're now going to be annual events because they were so well-attended and the community loved them so much. And I know we've had partnership with the school on those two different groups. The Key Club, I know, is hugely active in those. But also just different, our Music in the Park, we had a couple of different events where the school band and the school groups came and they were the warm-up band. So it's really fun to see that involvement with the kids in those really great community-wide events, and they're just growing. The attendance at those, every time we hold one, just continues to grow. And the diversity in the attendance is wonderful to see. We're really seeing all of the community coming out to enjoy those events. So we're just very excited about where we're headed, what we started with, and really the progress that we're seeing. So and the partnerships are just incredibly helpful for all of that. So with that, I also have the library information. So I have a handout, and I can pass it around. It's really just our library, by the numbers for 2022. And I won't go over them because you can read them. So but as far as programming goes for our library, oh, thank you. Our adult programming, we, again, our library partners with the school very often. And a couple of the programs that they did was with the Blooming Heights. They did an edible schoolyard trip in July. The library will be, let's see, they have an ongoing partnership hosting bird education classes throughout the year. The next Birdscaping Basics is going to be held on April 3rd. So that's from Courtney. Courtney O'Brien is our Adult Services Librarian. And then Liza Pope is our Youth Services Librarian. And I know she has been active with all, with the school and just so engaged, and it's just wonderful to see. We've done a number of English Language Family Nights, very successful. Highland Elementary, North Park, and Immaculate Conception all had those events. The attendance, I mean, 75 people at North Park 55 at Immaculate Conception, just hugely popular. And they're hoping that, to partner with Valley View on that type of event, looking into the future. So very creative programming that's in our, again, in our newsletter. They have our list of programs. I looked through there, and I've never heard of some of the different craft projects and different things that they're doing. So it's really fun to go and see and pick out what I think would be really a great session to go to. So please, if you haven't visited the library, do so. And it's not just physically the library, but digitally the library as well. There's so much that they do, it's amazing. My HR director and I chat. Library interviews are the most amazing interviews because the level of technical expertise and education you have to have to be a library services person is incredible. And the things I learn by doing interviews for library and positions is absolutely wonderful. So with that, I will, I'll stop talking and turn it over to the school. Thank you.
Have a quick, from the city perspective, I don't know if, because this impacts the schools too, and Central Avenue is one of my things. I don't know how many of the school board is aware or staff and anyone that can come. Mindot has now taken all the information, put together, and created four concepts for Central Avenue from 53rd to 37th. They're having a Mindot presentation, four concepts. Are you aware of that, Zena? Have you heard, yeah, so I don't know, it's the school board. March 16th from 4:00 to 7:00, 1530 Johnson Street Northeast. If you can please come, it would be great if the entire school board, I know the city council, staff, anyone that can show. Because if they have those little dots, they got two really good concepts out of the four that I really liked. But if anyone, just to be there and raise your voice because this impacts your students and your parents and your staff and your school, you know, having travel back and forth. So I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Superintendent, will you send that?
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for city folks? All right, Superintendent Stenvik, do you want to introduce your team?
Yes, I do, thank you. So the school district has a few updates as well to provide, and we're lucky to have all of our directors here this evening, and a few of them will come up to present first. So we have Director of Teaching and Learning Tara Takrol, Director of Community Education and Communications Kristin Stunkel, and our Executive Director of Educational Services, Bondon Yemwe. And so we'll provide a few updates, so I'll start. So our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And all of those are aligned to our School Board Equity Statement. And we wanted to kick off this presentation, kind of framing it as the well-rounded support that we provide for students, families, and staff. And all of those are connected to the community. And so there's a quote there by Melinda Gates, that deep human connections is the purpose and the result of meaningful life, and it will inspire the most amazing acts of love, generosity, and humanity. And I think that's what you'll find our staff are all about. So with that, I will turn it to Director Stunkel.
Members of the City Council, Mayor, City Manager, Chair of the Board, School Board, Superintendent Stenvik.
Kudos for that.
We all agree with that.
Other staff, executive. It's such a pleasure. I mean, as the Director of Community Education, I'm having a mountain-type experience, having the community and education together. And this slide talks about student voice and leadership. We are here for the students, and in Community Ed, all ages are students. In fact, every time I learn something at work, I say, we're a learning organization, so we're all learners in this organization. This year, all of our committees in our district committed to having student representatives on them. You see on the screen the list of the committees that have intentionally reached out to the students and invited them, and they are very active participants on each of those committees. Additionally, we are elevating student voice in the schools as well with the principal-student guiding coalitions, with the student council. And then also, the picture is taken at the Minnesota State High School League Leadership Conference. So this idea of don't make any decision about us without us, we are really living out and having students not as token members, but as real, authentic members.
Good evening, City Council and School Board. Thank you, Director Stunkel, for going through everybody for us. As we focus in on student success, we're really looking at growth and success for students from birth, all the way till when they leave Columbia Heights. So when they leave Columbia Heights, they have the opportunity to choose what their next path is. So as we look at that, we really focus in on research. And one of the areas of research we look at are Dr. Hattie's or John Hattie's work, where he really looks at different parts or different aspects of education and the effect they have on student learning. So the little graph or the little picture up there shows all the pieces that are in blue that really have a large effect size on student growth and achievement. And I'm not going to spend tonight going through all of them, but really focusing in on what are we focusing in on this year? What are we doing this year? And one of our big focus areas is professional learning communities. And professional learning communities allows time for our staff to meet together, look at student data, and talk about instruction. What is working and what isn't? So as we look at student data, what are changes that we can make? What are resources that we need to focus in on to support students? Another area we're focused in on is multi-tiered system of support. As we look at our students and how amazing they are, they all have different needs. So how are we supporting them academically? How are we supporting them with social-emotional pieces? How are we supporting them with mental health? So we create that system where we're able to provide intervention, which is listed up there, look at feedback and assessment, look at development of students, and really understand where they're at. We also are focused in on clarity on our literacy expectations and instruction. We know that literacy and being able to read is key as they grow and become part of Columbia Heights and become part of the city. So how are we supporting them with that? What does that look like in a kindergarten classroom across the district? And then the last piece, and one of the most important one, as I think about wellness and our whole child, is social-emotional learning. How are we supporting students with understanding how to work together about themselves and all the different pieces that happen in society and the city and schools? So we're excited for the work that's happening in our schools. Superintendent Stenvik mentioned, we have the best students, we have the best teachers, and the best families, right? We know that. And really working together to focus in on students.
And then we get into generosity of community with the scholarships. Over $272,000 in local scholarships given to high school students just last year. My understanding is that by far surpasses any other, or any other community, school district in the metro area. So when we talk about those scholarships, they might be individuals in the community that have their names on the scholarships. I've been seeing the teachers at the schools communicating about, we're collecting the, our teacher-based scholarships. There are outside scholarships as well. Our students are well-supported academically, but also financially, to be launched into college and career readiness.
So I get to talk about the English Language Program, EL students. I think Stephen Covey said, we don't learn from experiences, but we learn from reflecting on the experiences we've had. And so as we look at our school district and city, we are diverse. And 35% of our students in Columbia Heights Public Schools are English language learners. So one out of every three students that you meet is an English language learner. So the recent group of immigrants that are coming into our community are from Guatemala, Ecuador, and Ukraine. So in a recent meeting at the Ecuadorian Embassy, with Superintendent Stenvik and Louin Saavedra, our placement, student placement manager, they informed us that there are more students who are coming. So that's why we wanted to highlight the diversity that you've heard the city and the school district talk about is continuing to flourish in Columbia Heights. And so as a school district, one of our focus is to help our teachers, who work with these students daily, to be able to understand who they are, to look at them as asset in the community, and be able to teach them. So in order to do that, we, as a school district, we're providing ongoing professional development for teachers so that they can teach with EL students in mind. And there is a component of language development that our EL teachers, we have about 17 EL teachers in the district. And next year, we need to add some more because the number of English language learners has grown in the district. And so they need to build the language proficiency of those students. And then there is something beautiful that happens when people from different parts of the world come and create a community, is celebrating those cultural experiences. So the picture at the top, some of you may have read about it or seen it. It's when our students from the high school were celebrating World Hijab Day. And so there are some pictures online where you see them teaching each other how to wear hijab, and it was funny, if you look at the comments that they made, but they were enjoying celebrating an aspect from the Somali culture. And then we have the academic development. There is a commitment in our district to ensure that the new students, the new immigrants who have come in, become proficient enough in the language, learn academically, so that they can go on to college, in the trade, get jobs, pay taxes, so you all can retire. So that is, that is an economic proposition that we all benefit from, city and school district. And so to that, we have some needs. As our community becomes diverse, we need tutors to help both students and families to be able to develop their English proficiency. But at the same time, we also need volunteers in schools. So city people, you know, Kelly talked about the partnership we had this summer about reading. And so we still need volunteers to come into schools and read with students, or volunteer to teach English classes, like we just started an English language class for parents at North Park School for Innovation, because there is a great need for that.
As I said, students of all ages in our community and in our schools. In these pictures, you see some of the programs that are partnerships. We have the Glitter Bugs in that, with the rec staff t-shirts. Do you see that, Keith? The Glitter Bugs comes to Blooming Heights once a week, and they have since the very inception of Blooming Heights. So that's a wonderful partnership with Blooming Heights. In fact, just this morning, Wes and Amada and I were on an Operation Pollination Committee meeting at 7:30 this morning. Also a partnership with Rotary, with the watershed organizations. And so lots of partnerships. We have Encore, and Keith has already talked about our 21st Century Learning Center Grant and the critical programming that that provides. We also have partnerships with the University of Minnesota with the Discover U program. The picture with the Capitol in the background, that was, that was just a couple weeks ago. The, that was definitely a partnership with the senior program and our adult enrichment program. And a special feature of that was that one of the women on the tour had worked in the Capitol and found a picture of herself there, and another, her great uncle, had been governor. And she was, we were able to take a picture of her with her great uncle. And then I also brought pickleball tape to give back to Keith because he loaned it to us on our very first day of pickleball. Pickleball wouldn't exist for our district without the partnership with the rec department because we use, we use the city's paddles and also the nets, and occasionally the tape. So thank you very much. But we also have a deep partnership with the library. So our 21st Century Learning Center Grant is a jointly submitted grant. They said it's like a marriage. So you could imagine Keith and I are kind of married with this grant. But it really is the complementing so that our students have maximum opportunities, and that only happens through the partnership with the library and the rec department. And I really have deep gratitude for that. Thank you.
One of the other partnerships that we do in our school district is partnering with families. So family engagement is a big component that contribute to the learning of our students. And so we look at it from a three-tiered system. There is stuff that the district does to support parents, and then there is what happened at the school level, and then there is what happens every day in each classroom, between teachers, students, and families. So I think I'm going to spend some time just talking about what the district has done since we have more presentation to go on tonight. But just to be brief, at the school level, we do events. I think we had, we heard Kelly talk about the EL nights, EL nights that took place at the public library. We wanted to make sure that our families can access the library, and hosting it at the library gave them the opportunity to learn about the library, to see where it is, and to access it whenever they need it. And then, you know, schools wouldn't exist without teachers. And so our teachers are specialists, Dr. Tak, Director Takrol shared, because we expect our teachers to make daily interaction with students, but with also their families, to let them know how the children are doing. Some teachers have gone to the extent of Some teachers have gone to the extent of doing positive phone calls, because schools are notorious for only calling parents when something bad happens. And so we want to change that in our district, and we do see a lot of teachers calling parents and telling them the good things that they see in their children. But we also have care calls, right? So attendance sometimes suffers, and so teachers will call home and say, "I did not see Mohammed or Johnny or Megan. How is he? How is she doing?" Just to show parents that we are concerned and we want them in school. But the bigger portion of what we do is ensuring that we help our parents to help their children at home so that we can continue to help their children while they're in school. And so to that end, the REACH program, Reimagine Academic Excellence in Columbia Heights, a program that was instituted under the leadership of Superintendent Stenvik, before she became a superintendent, has continued on even to this day. And so the goal of that program is to connect parents to the educational system, especially those who are new to this country, to understand how school works. And then it's also introducing parents to community resources. Recently, in this very room, our homeschool liaison, we have one for each school, hosted a community resource fair, and we had 29 community-based organization and over 200 families that came. So that's our way to ensure that parents know what's available in the community so they can take care of their children so that their children can come to school ready to learn. And then we also focus on helping parents to acclimate in this new Columbia Heights community as well as outside. And I already talked about the English classes that we offer. You know, while the city adult basic, I mean, Columbia Public School and City Adult Basic Education Program may be full, we have to find different ways of helping our families to continue to acquire those communicative competencies so that they can navigate the society, the city government, and other resources available. So we are very satisfied that people from Columbia Heights are also bringing resources like clothing that we're able to distribute, right, here in our family center, to families who are in need. And finally, mental health being one of the central issues of our day, we've partnered with other community-based organizations to ensure that they provide classes around mental health for our families. And so that's the way the school district is engaging with families, because we believe that parents are the first educators of the children, and then we come second to support the other portion.
We've shared about how we've talked about supporting student success, supporting families. Now we're going to focus a little on our staff. And we mentioned earlier how important they are in all of these different pieces that we look at tonight. And we really start with from the beginning. The minute our staff walk in the door, after they've met with HR and they sign their contract, we start off with an induction program called Scaling the Heights, which was mentioned earlier. We try to reach out to the city. I know the mayor has joined us before. School Board joins us to welcome them into the community. We take a bus tour around. They stop at the theater, and they learn about the theater, they see the different schools, they see the different city buildings, and really are able to take in parts of the city. We also have an area that we try to invite the city in, to have tables, and to meet the teachers, and share about the resources within. We go to the library, we do a lot of different things with them, so really welcoming them into the community. That support continues as they're new to our schools with a mentorship program, where they're paired up with a teacher or a staff member who have been here, who has been here for a while, and they're able to meet with them monthly and check in with them, see how things are going, share what's happening. Another piece that we really continue in, Director Stunkel mentioned it, that we're all learners in the school district, and so professional development to continue to learn. And I shared with Executive Director Niamh Boye the other day, I was in the car with my nephew, and he's four years old, and he said to me, "I don't have school tomorrow." And I said, "Oh." He goes, "The teachers are learning." And I said, "Yeah, they need to learn." And he goes, "But why? Teachers know everything." And I said to him, I said, "They have to keep learning so they can keep teaching." And he says, "Yeah, we do ask a lot of questions." But as we think about our students, that they're always changing, who we have in front of us, we continue to keep learning. And we're really focusing the last couple of years on academics and equity. How can we ensure our students are growing as they are with us in Columbia Heights? And how do we ensure each and every student is growing? So we really focused down on the student name. We even look at the picture of the student as we're looking at data to really ensure that we're focusing in on the supports we have. Other pieces of our professional development include a collaborative time, where teachers are able to work together, so really building that collective teacher efficacy and supporting each other with instruction. And then we were able to look for and receive a grant to be able to support our nonlicensed staff to join. Many times in school districts, teachers have professional development days, but nonlicensed staff are not invited. For example, our educational assistants or our homeschool liaisons. So we've been able to pay them on the professional development days for coming in and joining us in the learning. We've also started affinity groups in the last couple of years. So we have a BIPOC affinity group and an LGBTQ plus affinity group, which are led by staff, and staff are invited to join. So it's open for them to have conversations with each other and to bring ideas to the district. They really are generating ideas. We're meeting with Superintendent Stenvik, I think, next week with some of them, where they have some ideas on recruitment and retention, so bringing their thoughts to the district. Staff Wellness is a collaboration between many districts, or districts, between many departments, including Human Resources, Communications, where their wellness, um, communicate, communicate, I can't talk today, Community Ed. I'm thinking of all the hats you wear and trying to figure out which one I want to pick. I want to pick Community Ed for this one. Has a wellness committee, really thinking about the opportunities we have to support our staff. We try to do a wellness day throughout the year where we bring in different opportunities for staff to be able to think about self-care as well as mental health, and how can we support that? And then building a district recognition. There's a lot of different opportunities in the district that we take to say thank you. It's amazing what our staff does each and every day, and so we thank them for that in different ways within the district as well as at the building level. And there's a picture there of our Scaling the Heights this year. So our new staff, new teachers to Columbia Heights this year.
Thank you for that. And as we transition with Director Hennekenz, I do want to give a shout out to our other directors, Director Sarah Godfrey, Special Education, and Director Lindsay Bennett from Human Resources. It's a strong team that we have here. Next, Director Hennekenz is our Director of Finance and Operations. You've seen this. Our Director of Finance and Operations, and he's going to provide a brief overview or a financial update.
Thank you. I'll try to skip through some of the things and try to be concise as possible. I'm not necessarily known for being brief.
What? What was that? How many, how many times have I been here to hear?
This is your third, third presentation. So I'm going to, I'm going to, you've already heard about the mission statement and the core values. And with this slide here, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, we are, our revenues do come from the state mostly, and we're, and the state regulates how we receive our revenue. So we're highly regulated, and every dollar that we get has rules behind it and strings attached to it and how we can spend it. So just wanted to emphasize that we're highly regulated by the legislature and the state. And our funds aren't just one bucket of funding that comes in and, and in one set of rules. It's, it's many different funds and many different sets of rules. So it definitely works different than, than how a city operates or how you run your, most likely, your own finances. And we do have aid and levy, and, and this is just kind of a picture of that revenue source on aid and levy. So majority of our funding, and I know that, yes, thank you, there's a, the slide deck is being passed around here, so you have that. Most of our revenue comes from state aid. So the gray bar there is our state aid, and you can see that, the, the point here is you can see that in 2019, just over $40 million was our state aid, and then in 2022, just over $40 million was our state aid. So it's roughly the same. So flat state funding has, has been a hardship for our district, and I think many school districts have seen that, as they've seen declining enrollment, particularly around the pandemic. And then that, and then the bottom piece, the next piece, and I know the community feels that the most, the taxes to the community, that really is actually this, a very small portion of our funding when you compare it to that state aid, and that has been very flat over time. It ebbs and flows a little bit, and that's just mostly on enrollment and any legislative changes, but we haven't had any changes to the voter approved in quite some time. And then the top is that, are the grant area. So that's where that COVID funding sits. Again, that is one-time funding that will be ending here September of 2024, but actually at the end of this year, we'll be spending a majority or almost all of our COVID funding. And that's why you see a bump increase in that blue portion, which we'll see go back down to more of that normal, normal range. And these are just expenses. I'm not going to focus on that. So we have a board policy of 6% to 12% for our fund balance. We are currently below that board policy. And, and it's just been a very hard few years for, for everybody and, and school finance and funding particularly. And it's, this isn't just our rainy day fund. This is, this is about operating the school system. If we don't have a fund balance, we don't have appropriate cash on hand, then we have to cash flow borrow. We don't get all of our funding right in the front. We get it metered throughout the year. And so when we see those payments, depending on how the payments come and how our metered payments come, and if we don't have enough cash or a fund balance, cash on hand, then we have to borrow to make our payments. And when you borrow money, obviously, it comes with interest. This is what it looks like, our fund balance looks like over time. You can see the red mark is that 6%, which is the bottom of our fund balance policy. So you can see that we're below that. You know, again, you can't stress enough the hardship of the last couple of years. And, you know, some of our biggest areas, we'll focus on transportation and special education cross-subsidy and that conversation, and that's really a main story of, in that state aid flat funding on why we're, we're at. As far as enrollment, we talk a lot about enrollment, we plan a lot on enrollment, we do enrollment projections, because that is how we're funded, and that's how we predict what our revenue will be for the year. And you can see that in 2018, which was just prior to the peak of our fund balance, that was where our enrollment was at high. And then as that enrollment started going down drastically, our revenues, you know, appropriately going down. But our expenses, that's the hardship. So expenses with the pandemic, we did get COVID funding, but COVID funding only carried us so far, and we see, we've seen lots of increases in other areas, which again creates that hardship. And we do see a rebound overall in the district. And so that looks like a positive, and it is, there's some positive to that. But I think really the focus in this conversation around enrollment is just where our elementary is. So our elementary enrollment declined just like the district as a whole, but now it's been flat. And that elementary enrollment is the prediction for the future. And so as we have large class sizes going out of our high school, we have small classes, smaller class sizes coming in, so we do predict declining enrollment. Now, one of, a key reason for declining enrollment across the state is just lower libraries. So that is part of the conversation. We, and within our resident, or within our enrollment area, our resident students was just over 4,000 back in 2018, and it's currently down around 3,700. So it's drastically dropped, just the, the base of students we have within our boundaries. So that is definitely an impact to our, our enrollment. This is just the percentage over time of increases the state has given. You know, traditionally, it's 2%. 2% is great. It's, it's, it's additional revenue. The reality is our expenses go up by much more than that with inflation. So it just isn't keeping pace. This shows us that. So you can see 2003 through 2023, so this year we get $6,863 per student. If inflation had have been adjusted over time, we would have received, this year we would have received 8,126. So that's about $1,263 per student, or that additional funding could pay for an additional 61 staff if you want to put it to an FTE in our school district. And you can imagine what we could do to support students with that kind of additional staff, whether it's interventions, whether it's mental health, whether it's smaller class sizes. So there's a lot that we could be doing. So that's, I think, one of the biggest key things right out of the gate for us when it comes to funding and what the conversation is at the legislative level right now, is that, is that having that inflationary adjustment to the formula. That's where we receive most of our revenue, and, and if it doesn't keep pace, that just means we're in a cycle of cutting, because our expenses go up more than what our revenue is going up. And they do have a 17 or $17.5 billion surplus that they're sitting on. So everybody's got their hand out right now on that, and their, their bills are coming fast and furious, and they're, I know they're all good things, but, you know, special interests can really, really hurt us. We need, we need the big areas of school funding to be taken care of, that general formula, inflationary adjustment, and then special education cross-subsidy, which I'll talk about here now. So I think from the special education cross-subsidy, and just so you know kind of what that is, we've talked about it before, but if it's costing us $12 million to educate the, our special ed group of students, and we're being funded at $6 million, and then the rest of it's unfunded, and, and really, there's mandates that really, you know, tell schools exactly what we need to do, how we need to transport them, if we need to transport them, what services we need to provide for them. They're needed, they're for the, they're, they're the needs of those students, but they're not funded. So that six, that six million that's not covered is the cross-subsidy. And so what pays for that? The general fund pays for that. So it's, it's a burden on the general fund for sure, and, and again, it's, it's a financial hardship for the district, and really what the state and the federal government need to do is, they need to fund those unfunded mandates. So beyond that, that formula, from the start of the, start of the conversation about the inflationary adjustment, adjustment, it's about a funding that cross-subsidy. You can see that last year was $6.2 million for our school district. Why does it look a little funny? And that's just the pandemic. That pandemic caused that, costs adjusted, student count adjusted, that we're receiving services. Just in 2021, I think it was about $800,000 less in transportation and special education, and so that was a hardship. And so that's that cross-subsidy. On EL, we also have an EL cross-subsidy. So our English learners, Bondo, Director Niamh Boye talked about, our EL population, it's a growing population. We have lots of immigrants coming in, and so that's just, that, that population needs additional services, and, and there's requirements for us to meet those needs, and again, unfunded. So we have about, just shy of a million-dollar cross-subsidy. So in '22, the cross-subsidy between EL and special education was just over $7 million. So that is an extreme hardship. So that is really the number two thing for us in, in education and finance, and what funding we need, is we need that cross-subsidy funded. And then the other thing that affects our district financially greatly is our per pupil operating. So this chart shows districts our size near the metro, and you can see that we're towards the bottom of that at $309, or 308.93 is the exact number. And so these are additional dollars that these districts are receiving from their community, from the tax base, to service their students. You can see Orno over $2,000. The cap for Minnesota is $2,110.97. And so obviously, we're far from that. We know that it's, it's not something that we can, we can, you know, just say, "Well, we need the cap," and we're just going to go ask for the cap, because that's just not a reality. We know where we are, inflation and everything that's going on, but it really shows, you know, where we're at financially, and, and that we do need additional resources, and other schools have those for their students, and, and so it's a big part of our conversation. And, and this is our neighboring districts comparison. And again, you can see Fridley, St. Anthony, Richfield, Roseville, Mounds you at over 2,000 again. So it's, we, we've had a lot of conversation about that. This hasn't changed since 2005, so it was passed in 2005 at 308.93, and it's been that way since. Obviously, we've talked a lot about inflation and what that means to us. So that funding being flat and inflation and costs going up just means, again, time, year after year, there's just less, less, there's just more cuts that have to be made. So this was renewed, it's a 10-year, or was a 10-year back in 2005, and as a 10-year, again, it was renewed in 2014, but that renewal was activated in 2016, so then it goes through 2026. So, you know, this, there is conversation about what next steps we have in this area. We did have a community survey that went out last winter-spring, and there's another one that'll go out this winter-spring, and it asked questions in this area, and, and you know, then it goes to the school board. We're not like the city where we can just say that, you know, we're looking at about a 4% increase to the taxes. It would be us going out, the school board approving a question on the ballot, to go out to the community for this, and that will come with lots of And that will come with lots of information from us, of course. And as we, that's what we provide when it comes to operating levies or bonds. It's, it's just us providing factual information. So that's the operating levy. I'm going to skip the summary slides because they're really just summarizing what I just said. But I think just the, the salient points are really that, again, that inflationary adjustment to that general formula is key. 2% is not enough. And cross subsidy needs to be addressed. And for us, transportation in a lot of other districts is drowning us too, just the sheer increase in costs, you know, projecting anywhere from 10 to 15% increase in cost. And, you know, but that's not what I'm getting for additional revenue or what the district's getting. So that's a hardship for us and where is that money going to come from? So we really need the legislative body to stand a step up and the governor to sign some good, some good bills or, and, and really fix some of this, this funding for us. And, and, and so that, you know, we can really do what our mission says and what our core values are.
Thank you, Director Henneken. Does anybody have any questions?
Have you guys discussed yet about where you're thinking you're going to do your, as far as, are you thinking of doing a levy again this fall?
So there'll be a community survey and that information will go to the school board.
And then you'll decide if you're going to do it this year.
School board will decide later this school, this, later in the spring what, what the next step will be.
Okay. And then how's your lunch program doing as far as, I know there was a big gap, there was a amount that they were hoping to have the community help pay. How are you doing with that?
So, yeah, so our, our lunch debt is, is still very high. So that still is a problem for us. The food service program as a whole has a really good fund balance. The food service program fund balance, these are the rules we're talking about now, cannot pay for the lunch debt. So even though they have a great fund balance in the food service program, they can't pay student lunch debt with that.
So how much is the lunch debt?
It's about 140,000 for our district. So that's a lunch debt accumulated over time. Every year we write off the kids that graduate out of the K-12 system, we write that off every year. That goes into the general fund because again, the food service fund can't pay for that. So again, the lunch debt has been a hardship. Free meals is great. One of the things that we can't forget is there's aid that's associated with those free meals. If they, we do universal free meals and we don't fix compensatory aid revenue and how that's formulated, that could be a $2 million decrease in funding for our district. I don't think, I think they're going to do what they need to do to get it done, but it is a conversation and we can't have it forgotten about. I know Sandra Feist is, is part of that conversation, so that's important. But we lost a million dollars in compensatory aid this year. And if we lost another $2 million next year, I mean, that just evaporates what anything that they would give us for additional aid. So again, flat funding and we just cannot continue to have flat funding.
Great question. Any other questions?
Great. Well, I'll give a couple of comments for closing and ask the mayor if she has any comments. But first, as we are going around and doing introductions, we forgot about that half of the room over there. There are two ladies sitting over there that I don't think either one of our boards or councils could survive without. So we have Dawn with our public schools and Sarah with the city of Columbia Heights. And thank you both for your tireless efforts in supporting all of us. We couldn't do our jobs without you. So I want to make sure you guys weren't forgotten over there. You're all quiet taking your notes, but we depend on you. So thank you for that. And really thank you to our city council and staff for coming today and sharing with us and having this excellent meeting and opportunity to learn about each other and what we're doing as we all kind of march together to make Columbia Heights and our public schools and our city to be the best that it can be. So thank you for your time. Mayor?
Yes, I'll just second and thank you for noticing and our staff on the, on the side of the room here. So thank you very much, Lorian. Yes, just echoing how important Dawn and Sarah are to the work that we all do for our community, of course, all the rest of the staff. But just want to echo that and look forward to hosting the next meeting, I think in our new city hall. So that will be very exciting and look forward to coming up with our next, you know, what our next agenda will be and how we can share and grow together. I know last night we had a work session. Was it, is it Tuesday? Yes.
It is.
Last night. And just all the council just said how excited we were to have this meeting. And so I just know we're going to keep growing. You know, we're such a small community that we all wear multiple hats, but we all run into each other in so many different, you know, different ways. We're connected through different schools or neighborhoods or social, social groups. And, and because we all enjoy each other's company, just because we're a part of the community, I just think it's like one more reason why we're all so excited to continue to come together because we actually truly all do enjoy each other, so.
An incredible partnership and, and a marriage in some cases. Incredible partnership. We are small and it, it really takes all of us. And to provide all of the opportunities we have and to see the collaboration with the staff and what they're doing, I think it's important that we continue to collaborate as well. And I hope this is more opportunities to do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And with that.
Thank you for staff coming to in the evening and presenting.
Yep. Appreciate it. With that, I will adjourn our meeting at 7:18.